I will call the meeting to order and we will say the Pledge of Allegiance. So, you'll join me in that. Second item on our agenda this evening is public delegations. Anyone from the public wish to address the board?
Yes.
The commission?
Good evening to the committee. I'm Spiro Curris of 44 Shore Road. I just want to start off by saying, you know, we've, I think we're on the seven month of these meetings. And I appreciate all the research you guys have done and all the data, you know, that has been gathered during this process. It seems like you guys have, you know, been very honorable and trustworthy throughout this whole process. But, of course, there are, you know, there are points that I would like to push back on that were, that have been made during these meetings. I just want to keep it pretty short, actually, so I'll just get to the point. At the last meeting, Mr. Chikello, and with all due respect, I don't mean anything personal, I'm just also playing devil's advocate, as you guys have been playing in a way, from, you know, from our side. No, no, nothing personal, just with all due respect, addressing just the points, you know, going forward. So, there was actually, you know, a valid question that you posed, and you happened to finish off the meeting by saying, you know, during this entire talk, the people that are for Airbnbs in this town, nobody has made the point that it's not about money. So, you know, we thought about that, and our simple rebuttal to that is, you know, of course, money always plays a role in everything that, that we do. You guys have mentioned time and time again during these last seven months that this committee was formed, you're getting paid to come up with something, and you guys have, you know, you're trying to come up with something as honorably and trustworthy as possible. I, I heard that once, I don't know if I'm wrong about that.
We don't get paid.
Oh, I, I thought you said that, Gary, actually. So, I apologize, I apologize.
We usually, we usually don't respond directly to public delegations, but I, I will jump in and say that, no, we are not paying.
Okay. If I'm an error, I'm an error. I apologize about that.
That's okay, no worries.
Yeah. So, um, but, um, so getting back to my point is, you know, the people that are operating Airbnbs in this town, I can, you know, confidently say from, from our side especially, and many others, that you can easily see on the platform because there are ratings there, people leave reviews, you know, the Airbnb host intern leave reviews for the guests. So, it's a heavily regulated process in a way with Airbnb. And there are some other points that I'd like to make about Airbnb a little bit later on. But, the point being is, we don't just take money from people and not try to provide a great experience in return, you know? They ask for towels, we run immediately for towels. I, I can, I, I've said this before, and there was some pushback, well, you might have a good house that you're hosting, but how about the rest of the Airbnbs? The system really filters out the good hosts and the bad hosts through these readings. You know, you can kick somebody out if they're not paying attention to the house rules. There's an entire book of rules that hosts have for their guests. If something is not being, you know, followed, you can kick somebody out. It's just like, you know, any hotel, any other process of just somebody not, you know, you're trying to welcome somebody into your own home, which is essentially what Airbnb, Airbnb is, and they're just not appreciating that aspect because they, they feel like they've paid, so they can do whatever they want. It, it just not, it, it's not the way it works. Airbnb hosts are more honorable than that, you know? They will preserve the integrity of being a host with the platform, and especially, you know, preserve their own home over taking the money, just to keep allowing somebody who will, you know, destroy their home or anything else, or disrespect the entire town and their neighbors. So, that, that's just something that I wanted to say about that. The other thing is, we've talked about the hospitality industry in the town, even there was somebody from the hospitality industry during the first or second meeting, I believe, and, you know, she said, "The town is doing well, there's a lot of revenue, you know, the cycle is good with money being spent around the town, tourism is pretty good, so that means there's money from tourists, they're coming in with some, you know, expendable income that they have." And, you know, hopefully, of course, they're spending it in Niantic, and if not, then at least very close by to, to our town. Going back to that, the hospitality industry has changed in the way that people don't have week-long vacations anymore, they don't have 10 days. People are working from home nowadays, they're just trying to get away sometimes for two, three, four days at the most, and they're trying to be comfortable. They don't want to go to hotels, of course, what are you gonna do? Take up all the time, you know, to try to reserve two, three, four rooms for, you know, there might be, there might be parents, grandparents, great-grandparents, as we've had before. You want to be comfortable, everybody wants to be in the same home. You don't want to be saying, "Oh, I want to see, I want to go see grandpa in suite," whatever, you know, "I want to go to the third floor, uh, fourth floor." You know, people really enjoy themselves when they're all together, they're doing activities together within the home, outside of the home. So, I just wanted to say that, you know, it's kind of like the modern-day way of, of vacation. These Airbnbs provide a great deal of comfort. Many times, they don't want the owners in the home, and I also believe that the owners don't want to be in the home, which leads me into what Airbnb has just done. In some cases, Airbnb was allowing cameras inside the homes, and this was the way for the owner to be inside the home. They're banning that altogether because it became, it's become an uncomfortable thing both ways. What they are still allowing, of course, is for you to monitor the outside of the home. And of course, everybody feels much better, you know, in that sense, because it's safety, the owner is able to keep on who's coming in and outside the house, just, you know, for the person that, for the guest that has applied to come into the home, into your home that you have allowed, you're able to, to monitor if everything they said is true. You know, they said, "Seven people?" "Seven people." "Six people?" "Six people." "Hey, I'm gonna have a guest over for a couple hours tonight." You know, okay, making sure this person comes in at 7:00 and they're leaving at 9:00. So, there are modes for this type of hospitality through Airbnb to just provide safety, you know, going into the safety, there's extinguishers inside the homes, there's, you know, essentially every corner, there's enough space for the kids, for people to have their own beds, you're not talking about people laying on the floor because there's not an extra bed or something like that. You know, like I said, Airbnb hosts go out of their way to provide the smallest essentials because these people have paid in an experience, for an experience, and we're trying to live up to that in, you know, in the highest sense possible, and just to represent the town. And I'll just, I'll just finish up here. So, we, I think we've had a good dialogue in the last several months. One of the things that maybe I thought about, that we collectively thought about as proponents of Airbnbs is, there was a committee formed, you guys were dealt with a very difficult task of trying to set precedent where there, where there is none in this town, I guess, so it's been a very difficult task. Why, maybe we can move forward where another committee is formed to have an open dialogue with Airbnb hosts who've been doing this six, seven, eight years, very experienced, they're running, you know, nice homes, no problems in the town, they're, you know, essentially doing it for, for the character of the town and not to take away from it, where we have an open dialogue of, you know, getting their ideas of essentially moving forward and not just looking backwards on maybe how to ban it or how to more heavily regulate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else for public delegations? Seeing none, we'll move on to item four, uh, three on the agenda, which is approval of minutes. Uh, let's see, we need to approve the minutes of our last regular meeting, which was February 27, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So, moved.
Gary moved, uh, do I have a second? Oh, okay.
Gary, second.
Okay, all right, so I have a first and a second, I didn't hear that. Okay, um, any corrections, any?
Nope.
Comments?
Okay.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Abstaining, I wasn't there last meeting.
Okay, so, Anne and John? Okay, abstaining, okay. All right, we'll move on to item four. I feel like there's a real echo happening, but we'll ignore it for now. Item four, reports. Under 4A, if there's any update concerning the opinion of officials from beach communities? So, Paul, I didn't know if you had any additional information or different information that you wanted to convey this evening on that topic?
Good evening, Madam Chair, good evening, everyone. No, I got no other input or any information, phone calls or emails since the last meeting, so what I represented from those people who contacted me at the last meeting is what we have for the beach community. Giant's Neck Beach Association is in the process of, like Black Point, redoing their zoning, there's been some conversation around that, but no decision has been made. That's gotta go before the commission.
All right. So, I just wanted to review a little bit about what we had, what you had talked about at the last, in the minutes, during the minutes of the last meeting. And so, it seems, you, you highlighted, I'm on the first page of the minutes, by the way, and I, just to refresh everyone's recollection, that you shared the feedback that you had received, and you emphasized the beach community officials' concerns about enforcement, the desire...
What page are you on, Madam Chair?
I'm on, um, page one.
Page what?
Page one of the minutes.
Page what?
Page one, the first page.
Oh, I see, okay, thank you.
So, at the bottom of that page, with the paragraph concerning your report, that you mentioned that the, these various beach association officials emphasized the issue of enforcement, the issue of self-regulation, and impacts that the short-term rentals are having within their communities. And so, just want to reiterate that, because when that section is written, I believe that section six, it will be section six of the paper, and I didn't write that section yet because I wasn't sure if we would have more information, but it's pretty well summarized in the minutes, but I think those are, I think those three topics are kind of what, what I'm hearing from you, if I'm correct.
Well, those are, those are some of the topics that you're hearing.
Right, right.
You know, the question of enforcement, I think, relates to the regulations and ordinances as a whole, we've heard that, not just with short-term rentals, but with noise and...
Everything.
And other things, so that's always gonna be...
Right.
And, you know, the question is, if you throw more money at it, does that mean more enforcement? Or, you know, more often than not, it doesn't, so, that conversation. But, as far as the beach community goes, they are looking for some type of way to do that, if they don't have their own zoning, you know?
Okay.
But I don't think that's a question we're gonna be able to answer.
Right, well, hopefully. But on the topic of, of, or economy or self-regulation, did you, I guess my, I guess I'm sort of asking this question based upon what, what you reported last, last time, do you think there's a, a feeling amongst these officials that, or the members of those communities, that they really want a more autonomous situation, or they, are they looking to the town, since they don't have their own zoning, they're looking to the town to provide that structure?
I think in some cases, they may be looking for the town to enforce the ordinances they have, if they don't have their own zoning, like three of the, three of the nine quasi's have their own zoning. The other six, you know, would be looking for some type of level of enforcement, but, you know, on the other sense, you know, the fact that we live in, in the country that we live in, people like to, you know, people like to have their own say in what goes on, especially in their own communities and in their own neighborhoods, and I think that was certainly something that was mentioned to me last time, they want to be masters of their destiny, to the extent that they can, but, you know, they would need the Norris ordinances, I think, enforced, I think they would like a better handle on parking ordinances enforced.
Okay, okay.
And then, the whole idea of, of safety ordinances, if, if there are such a thing, because I'm not, I'm not sure there really is.
There really aren't, unless, unless we designs, you know, recommend the designing of something that includes, as we've talked about, you know, fire inspections and, and safety inspections, right? So, but I just wanted to highlight that, there's, even though they're looking, even though the, the communities that have their own, that don't have their own zoning, are looking to us for some guidance, there's still, of course, this desire to, to self-regulate where possible, is, is what I'm drawing from what you're saying, okay. Okay, any other thoughts from anyone on 4A? Because that I can, now that I, yes, go ahead, John.
John, so, I was at the, uh, Black Point had a zoning meeting last Friday evening, which I was at, in the, and, you know, the question came up, because we do have, as Paul mentioned, brand-new regulations that have been, you know, updated, and they were just setting the agenda potentially for this year of anything, any areas that they wanted to address, if anybody had anything, and the Airbnb issue, you know, came up, and it was discussed somewhat extensively, I guess, for a while. And, you know, we do have our own zoning, but, you know, the issue of enforcement is a major issue, and also, the, the, the other thing that was, you know, relatively clear, I would say, is that, well, they want to see what comes out of this commission, too, you know, and see what kind of recommendations, you know, we look at. And, but in addition, you know, the, the feeling, feeling I received, or you comment also, feeling I received was that they don't, it doesn't appear to be, as I've stated before, a huge problem currently at Black Point, but could be in the future, and that's what they would like to address on the zoning, their own zoning.
I see.
They were looking, they were looking for, you know, to see what we do here, so...
Well, thanks for that, that's, that's helpful, we'll add that in. Okay, any other comments on 4A, thoughts? Okay, so that, I think we've kind, we're kind of buttoning up that, that one section, so that can be readily completed, section six of the report. Under 4B, we'll move on to that, this is reports concerning enforcement experiences of some of the other local municipalities, and at our last meeting, we kind of divided up some of that, some of that work. So, I know that Gary Frujia here and Greg have done some, some research, and I also did some research for the, concerning the Simsbury program of regulation. So, I can start with either one of you, jump in, let us know what you've figured out.
My research is around Ledyard, and I contacted the assistant zoning official there, whose name I never did get because we had a bad connection, but his contention is that they have moved to not permitting short-term rentals. Asked him three times to make sure I understood him correctly, I said, "I want to make sure I understand, you're telling me you do not permit short-term rentals?" And he says, "Yeah, if it's not over 30 days, we don't allow it." And he was the enforcement officer, so, I, I think, that's, that's what I found out. So, there is no enforcement to talk about from Ledyard.
Okay.
Per se.
Could I have you repeat that, say they're moving to that, or that's what they're...
That's their current policy.
Okay.
And when...
Well, they do enforce it, but I don't think they have any permitted short-term rentals, and so, as he said, the season is starting, and you will see how it goes. And then, he really wanted to know, as John says, "What are we doing?"
Okay, I know, I got that too.
He wants to know what our, what our feedback is, and I said, "I can't really say," so...
So, in, in putting together that section of the paper, which we'll come to later, but it is that, um, section 10 of the paper, on examples from other towns, in looking at Ledyard's progress, you're right, it's, you know, I, I heard you, you speaking earlier about it, um, before the meeting, but, yes, they started with an ordinance, went to a regulation, they sunsetted the ordinance, went to the regulation, and then they actually have a ban, and the ban is expressly written, I think I cited the section, in, in that section 10, I cited the section of their regulations, where they, they expressly forbid the, the short-term rentals, meaning 30 days and under. So, that was their, you know, their sort of about-face on the whole topic.
I did, I did ask about the impact of the Wibby case, in their opinion.
Okay.
And he did not have any, his boss had talked about it at length, but he personally didn't have any knowledge of the Wibby case, and didn't think, didn't see how it was going to impact their regulations. I thought that was for the short side, but nonetheless.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's gonna have some, some say, and maybe on the, on the length of time of these rentals, who knows? Um, the, I didn't, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
You know, this is Preston we're talking about.
Uh, this is Ledyard.
Ledyard, okay. So, it goes to the conversation about, you know, being masters of our own destiny, right? Ledyard has got a much different community than any of the communities from Cos Cob up to Stonington, where I would say, the vast majority of short-term rentals exist along the coast, because that has for decades upon decades been the practice of people from one side of the state coming down here, or from out of state, coming down here and staying for a week or so on vacation. Ledyard and Preston may offer hiking and horse farms and, you know, whatever other activities have happened, I'm not...
The casino.
Casino, well, casinos, yeah, right, exactly. So, the casinos are, are the one, but, um, so I think, I think we just have to take that in mind when we're putting our report in, is that we're using examples of other towns.
Yes.
But, I think that goes to my comment before about mastering your own destiny and what's best for the community, because we really didn't have any problems to speak of prior to the onset of internet and, you know, COVID and all that stuff, so...
Right. No, it's true, you, you make a, a very good point, Paul, about how, uh, in that section 10 in, in the report, we can go through those examples, but you can see that these, these towns can be very different from Islaime, and, you know, have very different experiences. So, you just, we have to judiciously take from them, the examples that they give, for sure. That was very apparent, that nothing is fitting us as an example, there's no, there's no template out there, you know, for this. And, with one last point about Ledyard, excuse me, with the, with the, and Greg, I'm sure you ran into this, where the, there was an ordinance, and then the regulations, and the, and the, um, the people in planning and zoning felt that regulations under zoning would allow for better enforcement because of cease and desist, the sort of accumulative effect that you have, accumulation of fines that you have. So, so they did that about-face, but that also didn't work out, so, yeah, very interesting there, so you were gonna say, Paul?
Just a quick comment about the diversity of towns making these decisions, we can relate to the diversity of the beach associations, when I spoke about Pine Grove, where they're much, much closer together than almost any other community, and they had more year-round people living there. That's, and she mentioned, Deb Jett...
Harris, right.
Harris mentioned that she would like to be masters of her own destiny, but they can't really do it because of the proximity, just as Nolan is saying, you know, they don't want short-term rentals, I think they're 30 days or more in their regulation, and that's due to the fact that their proximity is, so, that's the, the whole thing with government regulations and statutes is, you know, the law of unintended consequences, where one size just doesn't fit all.
That's right.
And we have the opportunity here to, you know, to recommend something to the board that kind of is, has some elasticity to it, depending on where you are, because, so I think, I think those are all, those are all important factors to kind of talk about. And the zoning regulations, listening to our attorneys say that these are permissive regulations, so if it's not in there, or it's not permitted, so that's catamount to having something that's written in there that says it's not permitted.
Right.
It's the same thing.
Exactly.
I still bring up the long-term rentals, and what is the impact on that, because as far as I know, that, they're not mentioned either, so...
That's correct, yeah.
So, that's a...
It's interesting, they're not permitted, but they are assessed.
Yeah. Yeah. But I think that's...
Right, and the left-hand over the...
I think that's mostly where all this is going, anyway.
Yeah. Let's hope. Okay, so, Gary, you had, you had investigated Lime's zone, set of zoning regulations, and you had some good conversations with the zoning officer there.
I met with the zoning enforcement officer, a man named Ross Byrne, who's been in the job for two years. He is a part-time employee, and he has a staff of one part-time deputy and a part-time administrative assistant. Byrne participated in their short-term rental committee, much like ours, to devise zoning regulations, and, uh, once those were written and approved, he was asked to become the zoning enforcement officer, which he did, although he's looking to sunset himself from that job. Byrne told me that Lime opted for zoning regulations as opposed to an ordinance, because, he said it would have voided the grandfathering of non-conforming zoning with an ordinance. That's something I hadn't heard before, and I hadn't considered, but I thought that was noteworthy. He said, additionally, they decided not to go with an ordinance because Lime has no police force, and they're currently without a resident state trooper, so there would be nobody to enforce this if they went after it. He also told me that he accepted the position on the condition that he would not be required to hunt down people who didn't have permits. He didn't want to be in that business, and so the town said, "Okay, we're not gonna be in that business." So, they have zoning regulations, which I'll get into, they also got a market, a free-market survey from Granicus, which identified 17 SDRs in the town. There's 2,400 people in the town, so that's, they're roughly, we're roughly 10 times larger than they are, and our estimate is roughly 10 times larger than theirs. So, once they got the regulations in place, he sent cease and desist letters to the 17, and it was interesting, I thought, because we were getting a 10%, you know, cooperation on permitting, but of the 17 he sent out, 10 applied immediately and were accepted, two more are in the process of being accepted. Let's see what else happened here. One owner converted to a long-term, which is not regulated. Two owners, homeowners stopped renting, one homeowner sold, and one homeowner is heading to court, he's challenging, and he's getting ready to sue. So, it was a pretty good spread, but...
Almost got, almost got away with the regulations.
But, they had, of the 17, he's got 12 either approved or on the cusp. So, what they did, and it's something that we were talking about... Um, so, uh, what they did, and it's something that we were talking about, they had regulations in place for bed and breakfast, and what they decided to do is simply take those and update those and incorporate those. But they did not include long-term rentals, so long-term rentals are still not regulated or even mentioned in their zoning regulations. So, uh, what they, what they did with their zoning regulations, they, um, have an annual registration and a fee. Um, the owner provides name, contact information, police, for the police, fire, and ambulance. They list the number of beds, bedrooms, parking spaces. They insist that the rental unit must be the owner's primary residence, and the owner or a host designated by the owner must be on the premises during the rental. They do not require any fire or safety, um, inspections, thank you, um, but they do have, want a declaration, uh, from the homeowner that, that those things are taken care of. If food is served, because this serves both the bread and breakfast, they, they do require, um, an inspection from Ledge Light, which is the health and safety. Their rentals, on the occupancy side, their rentals are 30 days or less, no more than three guest bedrooms, and no more than six guests. That's for a regular permit, but you can apply for a special permit if you're looking to put more people in, but no more than 12. 12 is the maximum. No events of any kind, no, no catering can be provided. Off-street parking must be provided. And on the fee side, um, they charge $25 for a regular STR zoning permit, which is the lowest of all of them that we surveyed. They made $25 because that's their standard price for any zoning permit. If you want a special permit, so if you're looking for more than six people, um, or up to 12, that's a $300 charge. Also, I, I learned that the state requires a $60 fee for a state land use permit, um, so if we get into this, we're gonna have to take that into consideration. Enforcement of the regula, uh, the complaints that Byrne receives, he sends out letters, he asks people to come into conformance wherever the problem is. If it, if it is not resolved, um, the penalties are either they revoke the STR on the spot or they don't renew it when it comes up for annual review. So far, he's had none that, that have done that. I included on, on this page three here, a statement of intentions, which they wrote into their zoning regulations. Um, I don't think it needs to be as detailed as this, but I thought it was a really good approach, and our 12 points of what we're trying to achieve, um, I think it's, it's good that people will know that we're looking, you know, so, so people who rent, um, or who own, um, a home for an STR, their rights are preserved. People who are living in the community, their rights are preserved. I just thought that was a good idea. And the last page is, um, their permit. Um, it's the application for their permit. Um, of all of the six that I looked at, this one was the simplest, um, and most to the point, probably because the town is as small as it is and they don't have an enforcement in place, but, um, I was impressed that they were able to achieve what they did.
And I, was it, yeah, go ahead.
You said there's a way to do a special permit for more people. Is there any way to do a special permit here if you're not gonna have somebody on-site? Or that's?
No, that's, that's, yeah, that's baked in.
Getting by that.
Right.
Other than you're gonna get a host, or you're gonna get somebody to shop for you, I guess.
Right.
Am I correct that you had mentioned there, it took two years to?
Yes.
To develop the regulations?
Yes.
And this gentleman who is now, um, the zoning enforcement officer was on that committee?
Right.
Okay, so, two years.
[laughing]
And they used their bed and breakfast regulation?
Existing, correct.
Existing, so it was a process, really.
Sounds like they updated them, yeah.
Yes.
Another thing I, I found out interesting of, of the 17, because I asked him how many were beach, um, houses, and he said none of them were. That Lime is largely rural, um, and most of these are small houses that are not, and none of them are on the water. And he believes that 17 is not the exact number. He thinks there are more there. He especially thinks there's two large estates that are doing weddings, and, um, they're pretty much violating every regulation of the town. But, uh, but the zoning enforcement officer, since there's been no complaints, he's just sitting there.
Okay, so he's not actively enforcing as, as the plan was?
He's not knocking on anyone's door saying, hey, I see you're advertising on VRBO here.
Okay.
What's the deal? He's not doing that.
If a citizen comes to him and says, there's a problem with my next-door neighbor?
Correct.
Or a guy down the street, then he acts.
Correct.
Okay.
So, it was very informative, I thought. Again, to Paul's point, there's a world of difference between Lime and East Line, um, but I think for their town, they've come up with a pretty workable solution.
Yeah, it seemed to fit the nature of, the, the nature of the town.
Right.
Um, but, and very well thought out, um, set of regulations, et cetera. Any other questions, um?
Gary, did, did they, did he say what the, um, regulation was that the person who was gonna file a claim, did he like this occupancy thing?
Um, he did not, and I did not think to ask him that question, but I could, I could, I could certainly double back. That would be good to know.
My reading has shown that, that issue of having a owner live, you know, or, or manager stay there is a bone of contention, and it's been struck down so many times throughout the country.
I can, I actually, I'll give him a call.
Thank you.
Good to know. Go ahead.
They didn't mention any, uh, problems with noise or, uh, other violations, parking that caused any?
No.
Not having a resident trooper, it's difficult.
Right, it's difficult. And, um, and he didn't want to be in business and be in the bad, going in and, and enforcing this. Although he has sent out a number of cease and desist letters, he has no problem doing that.
Okay.
Um, but it's if, if somebody's outside the regulations and that's brought to him, he's not, he's not looking for...
Okay, he's not being proactive?
People, correct.
In, in his approach, okay. Very good. Any other questions for, um, Greg or Gary? Your reports? Okay. So I had, um, I just have a very brief report about Simsbury, so, to me, it was the example of, it all looks so great on paper, you know, and really nice, um, ordinance and a good set of regulations, zoning regulations to back up, so I'm thinking, well, there's a whole, a whole universe of, um, of STRs in Simsbury, and then I find out that they only have two permitted short-term rentals, um, after all this. But, um, the, basically, uh, there was one situation that was getting out of control, and then the person actually tried to, tried to, um, have a, a bed and breakfast application go through, that failed, and so this ordinance and the regulations grew out of all of that. So I first was able to speak to a staff person and then had an email exchange with Joseph Hollis, who is their compliance, zoning compliance, uh, officer, and what I did was I just listed a, a number of questions for him. So, um, I asked him how many short-term rentals operate in Simsbury, and so the answer was two, and I kinda had a sense that it was gonna be a low number from the staff person. Um, any complaints, um, during an application process? There were some complaints, but since, um, that was filed, no, no other, um, complaints. So then my, my question was like, what's the impetus for this? And the impetus for, you know, for having regulation in the town is to kind of get ahead of a problem. It was a nasty problem, then to get ahead of future problems. So that's where they were at, um, which is very unlike East Line, where we've had this universe of short-term rentals happening for some time, and just certain other, certain issues surfacing. And then enforcement, um, he said that, uh, basically periodically, uh, there's been no issues of enforcement, uh, with those two permits, and then beyond that, um, he and his staff will periodically, um, look at the, uh, you know, the platforms, Airbnb, Verbo, and check, and then they will institute, um, enforcement action should they find, if something pops up. So they're more, they're, they are affirmatively and being proactive. But, um, so it was just, um, a really nice set of regulations and a nice ordinance, but not a lot happening there. So that was my experience with, uh, Simsbury.
So the Simsbury people, if you compare that to what Granicus tells us 10% will put in for a permit? Did you get a feeling from him that he thinks there's 18 other people out there doing this? Or is he not at all?
Yeah, so he, that was a question I asked, but the response was more, um, that he didn't necessarily think so, but that, but that he was, um, they would periodically check. That was his response to that question. Not that he had, for example, um, Lime's experience where there's a strong suspicion or a suspicion that there is more happening out there. This wasn't necessarily the case, but he is, they have been checking and they have been proactive in, um, I guess, right, in enforcing where there is no permit. But I didn't get the sense there was some tsunami of these, um, operations there. So, um, but that's, that was the Simsbury story. And then beyond that, in that section 10 of the paper, um, just went through the coastal towns that we could. One that's missing, which I would like to write something about, is Stonington, uh, where there was an ordinance, uh, and there was a referendum, as you recall, and so I'll just have to go back and look at some, um, some newspaper accounts of that. So I did want to include that.
Did they have a number, so they did a good job covering?
Yes, on that story, I remember, yeah. So that'll be good to remember, uh, what happened, and there's a lot of controversy there. People wanted very heavy-duty regulations, others wanted very, you know, fewer regulations. Um, the town was criticized for not doing enough, and then the, then the ordinance just failed.
It went to town meeting and, and, or maybe it was?
I think it was.
It wasn't, it was a town-wide referendum.
Referendum, yes, yes. So, um, okay, so we'll come back to some of these topics when we get into, um, number six on the agenda. So, um, if there's no other questions on those reports, we'll go to 4C and any reports of our co-chairs, I stuffed that in now. Um, Gary, do you have anything? You had, you had a date for the, um, for the hearing.
Yes, I did see a date.
Yes.
When did I say that?
Uh, that's okay. Wednesday, March 27.
So Whibley is going to be argued March 27.
Yeah, 11:30 in the morning.
So we can have a field trip before?
Yeah.
Is there tailgate beforehand? Just have, you get a party?
It's next week.
Are you taking this one?
Yes.
Because if there seems to be another show on the other TV there, I don't know if you noticed that.
So I'm taking this, our?
Oh, for future?
For future use, not, yeah, not live stream, but right, right. So, yeah, so that'll be happening, um, yeah, and, and again, it will take some time before a decision will be rendered, but it will be very interesting. And, and along, in the same vein, there is, and, um, and you may be familiar with, um, the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies, um, they're having an annual conference, um, also next week at the AquaTurf in Plansville.
Is it on the 28th?
I think it's on the 28th, yes. Do you go to those meetings, or can you go to those meetings?
I did get a memo about that, I'm not sure who's attending from that.
Yeah, okay, all right, and I think, um, Mr. Mahalan said that he has some conflict and can't go.
Actually, we may have a zoning meeting.
Oh, okay, yeah. I mean, I, I may pop in there, I don't know what, what's the story, but in any event, um, Attorney Pelosi, who is the attorney for Whibley, uh, is actually speaking. He's, he'll be the principal speaker at that event, and the topic is short-term rentals. I believe there'll be other speakers, um, so that will be an interesting, um, you know, maybe update of things.
Did you say it was the 27th of March?
So the 27th is the, um, is the oral arguments before this Connecticut Supreme Court.
Would that make it a Saturday? Does that make sense, Steve?
Maybe Wednesday.
Wednesday, I think that's a Wednesday.
But today's the 27th, right?
No, it is the 27th.
I have Wednesday, the 27th, and then the next day, um, Attorney Pelosi, who is, will be really, um, in the right mode, because he will have argued before the Connecticut Supreme Court, is going to that dinner and will be talking about short-term rentals. So, and, and others, I, I know that, um...
Which, which side is he on?
He's on the side of Mr. Whibley. Yes, so that's interesting.
Complainer?
Yes, that's right.
And that's at the AquaTurf?
That's at the AquaTurf. And I have that information if anyone's also interested.
They did ask Mr. Mahalan to speak at some part, but because we have a zoning meeting that night, I think he's coming to zone.
Okay, okay, and I ha, I can, I can make some copies of this.
How much is it?
It's $70, um, for members, and $80 for, for those of us not members of that, of the organization, the Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies. But I have the details, so we can make some copies of that. Okay, um, all right, so...
And what time, what time was the oral argument on the 27th?
11:30.
11:30 in the morning, right.
Would like information on that 28th, if you...
Yeah, sure, I can make some copies, yeah. Brooke can make some copies at the end of a meeting, sure.
Now, that oral argument was not at the Supreme Court.
Right, it's going to be at the Wat, it's like the Watkin, Watkinson School, which I don't, I'm not exactly familiar with that.
It's in Hartford, it's a private school.
So they use that facility.
They don't let people like me in there, so.
So, um, but that'll be interesting, and hopefully there'll be some coverage of the story, you would think there'd be some interest, you know? So, um, let's see what happens there. All righty, um...
You get a mop bucket, a mop, you can kind of...
Right, we can just...
You got my number, right?
Pretend to go in there. Okay. Um, so I'll, I'll move down to item number five on the agenda, which is, um, having a discussion concerning committee recommendations and timetable for making. Um, and Greg and, um, Gary had mentioned, um, you know, raised the issue of, we know we're doing this status report, and we know we're not making final recommendations at this time, but what can we recommend at this time? And, or set a timeline for that. So, I'm gonna give the floor to, to, to both of you on this topic, um, since you raised the issue, if that's okay.
So, so I think the thrust or concern was the, what we mentioned the last time, that there could be a place for both an ordinance and regulations. There are certain aspects that certainly lend themselves to zoning regulations, other aspects, uh, that could be handled by an ordinance. And specifically, I think, in my own personal opinion, as I've always said, is I think a permit system, um, could be handled by an ordinance, whereas who allows rentals and who doesn't is certainly land use and should be handled by zoning, in my opinion. So, the length of rentals and where they're allowed certainly can be impacted by the Whibley case, and so they should, that should wait, you know, to the outcome of that case. On the other hand, whether as a town we decide to require a permit, maybe from all rentals as opposed to just short-term, um, that could be recommended in the absence of that case.
Okay, so that's your, that's, that's one thought, and Gary, did you... Okay, so that's your, that's, that's one thought, and Gary, did you share that thought?
I thought, well, I similarly thought that an ordinance would be covering an administrative process. If we're gonna do permitting, how much we're gonna charge, what it entails. Whereas the zoning regulations would be more about occupancy, parking, duration, those sort of things. And it seems like if that's the case, an ordinance could come first. If, once we get some idea from the Board of Selectmen which way they're leaning, then we could go back in and start wrestling with the regulations.
So I'll put it out for thoughts. You know, I, I have a thought in my head about the relationship between the ordinance and zoning, and I'll come back to that, but I'll open the floor up to others who have thoughts.
So the suggestion is possibly we can do the regulations before hearing Whibley? Or is it the other, is it...
The permitting ordinance part of it first.
Oh, I just didn't hear if anybody mentioned parking, if that could be the ordinance also. It seems like all the police needed was some kind of equipment to measure sound, and they can enforce what we already have.
The noise ordinance, yes. I mean, I mean, in my mind, the noise ordinance and the parking ordinance is both of those definitely are areas where Board of Selectmen can, you know, make some changes, encourage beach associations to make their, make their issues known, let's say to the Police Commission with respect to parking. So I think those are very, they can go forth right now on those topics. You don't have to even wait for the status report to be submitted, for sure.
We're certainly not gonna make an ordinance that says short-term rentals have to be quieter than everybody else, right? It's gonna apply to everybody, right?
Correct, those, yeah, they, the, go ahead, Paul.
I thought with our collective salaries, we could pool together and buy a decibel level. Because I think they're only about 200 or 300 bucks, right?
And we'll donate everything I've made on this.
I think we could give that, you know. But I think the zoning thing is important, that conversation, the conversation you brought to the table about blending the B&Bs with short-term rentals. I mean, B&Bs are allowed in every residential zone here in East Line. So, you know, adding a clause to the zoning regulation, to either approve or disapprove, whatever the will of whoever makes the final decision is, would be an easy zoning fix, you know? Because you would have to definitely distinguish between those definitions in the zoning regulations, which calls for at least addressing recommendations on both the ordinance and the zoning reg.
Yeah, and I think I'd toss in one step further and loop in long-term rentals into that as well. So just treat it as residential rentals across the board.
Which, it could be what March 27th is gonna be talking about. I don't know when they'll decide. We'll let you know when we clean the floors.
So, I mean, I, I definitely like the idea of using zoning plus ordinance, and I come to that feeling if something is done, that that is a, a good approach for a lot of reasons. But your, Greg's thought and Gary's thought, I, I see where you're going with that. The only issue I have on that is, once you establish the ordinance, then that's the way you're beginning the regulatory process. And so to cut out zoning at that point wouldn't be the way I would necessarily approach it, because right now our zoning regulations, because of their silence, do not, do not permit short-term rentals. In theory, we know, we know there's another universe of reality, but in theory, that's the case. So if we do an ordinance, then what happens is, and we, by, literally by signing that ordinance, say Board of Selectmen comes up with it, it goes through, the town approves it, that's an approval of something that is not allowed under zoning. So back to our original goals and thoughts, we need to make sure that there's a consistency with any land use issues, that if you decide to do certain things by ordinance, because that, that augments your regulatory process, or you like to use it for permitting, having, you know, having a census of, you know, of the number of rentals you have and so forth, which makes total sense, you still need to do something, even if it's a small thing with zoning, to say, short-term rentals are now defined, they're now in our B&B regulation or something else. So that would be my only holdback, is that there's, that, that I would feel you need to marry those two things, you know? They need to be consistent.
My thought was not necessarily that the Board of Selectmen would authorize this.
Okay.
But we would get, like you're putting in this interim report.
Right.
Our next report would say, this is the path we're going down, this is what we are looking at for an ordinance, regulations to follow, give us a sense. You don't have to ask. But once we have that, then we have a framework to get into the zoning.
I see, what do you think, yeah?
I, I think that...
Let me get you a mic, because...
Oh, I can use this.
Shy of my...
I think, I mean, I'm not on a Board of Selectmen, but I think that any, that the Board of Selectmen would want the full picture before they start to make any piecemeal decisions. So if I have my crystal ball, that's what I would, I don't think they would do anything on a piecemeal basis. Because we're giving them an interim report, we do not have the Whibley thing. We don't know how far it's gonna go, but I, I don't think it would be prudent, I don't think the Board of Selectmen would think it would be prudent to take action in a piecemeal fashion before Whibley is decided. I have no basis to say that.
You know, in agreement, the zoning regulations is full of specifics with regard to numbers and... It would be easy enough to plug in a few, you know, taking the regulations and the sections of the regulations that are applicable to our discussion, and plug in a phrase or plug in a sentence, and kind of talk about it amongst ourselves and say, how does this read? And just put some, you know, some of those conversations in italics, as we say. These are suggestions that we might approach the zoning regulations with, as we are doing the same thing with ordinance. So it's kind of not one depending on the other, but two parallel tracks that depend on each other, if you will, in order to work, so.
And when would you do that, Paul? Like what, like, would you incorporate that into this report, or would you wait a little to do that? How, how would you do that?
I think depending on the Supreme Court case, I mean, that, they'll, they'll tell us which way we're gonna go. But I, I think it'd be prudent to do it as part of the process, moving, moving all the information forward. I mean, they want recommendations, that's, that's where the solutions are gonna be, you know, one way or the other.
There is a section in the report where we do state that there's a growing consensus on the board about how to regulate using ordinance and zoning. So it's not a final recommendation, but it, and that can be, that paragraph can be beefed up a little. But in other words, it is directing, you know, it's showing that we are starting to come to consensus on that, and that's the direction we're headed. If, you know, if there are other things you think that we, we can kind of agree upon, you know, at this point, it's, it's tough, because we don't have Whibley. And then the other thing we don't have is, Attorney Zemarka had mentioned this to me, a couple of months back, that when we do come up with our final recommendations, that there will be that overlay of town attorney review. So we don't have that yet. So anything that we say is still tentative, if you will, or, you know, we can say it, you know? And I think we've been saying some things in this report, clearly, but we don't have that at this point.
If I may?
Yeah, sure.
I really think this raises a bigger question of, you know, we don't wanna, we don't wanna hand a 100-page report to the Board of Selectmen and have them say, oh, thanks, we've got this third party we're gonna pay to actually put all this in place for us. You know, how far do they want us to go? How detailed do they want us to go beyond just saying, we think there needs to be some change? Do they want us to go to the point of saying, we think that change needs to incorporate a permit and this, or this and this? Or do they wanna know, you know, exactly, in great excruciating detail, what we would recommend? And I would, you know, with Gary, I would say absolutely not. I think it would be a waste of the committee's time and a waste of their time. Because I say, they can, they can take our assessment, and they can turn around and call up Granicus and say, hey, we need your help, come and do this.
Yeah, oh, definitely. I, I don't think we need to get...
Please, come and do this. So we can stop, yeah.
I don't think we need to get, you know, that specific. We could, obviously, if, I think there's another paragraph somewhere in the paper where the general, the commonalities of some of these, and you guys have, we've all touched on those the commonalities that you, that you find, you know? Okay, you know, this is basically what we're talking about, under 30 days. You know, the, the number of, of people that you can rent to, et cetera, et cetera. So there's something, you know, there's at least, you know, five or six main points. And in your chart that you provide, or that you guys provided, there's, those commonalities are apparent.
Well, I think that, and as I said before, I, I think the Whibley case is gonna, it's basically going to put to bed the notion of a short-term rental. We're either gonna have rentals, or we aren't. And, and whether they're for a day, or whether they're for two weeks, or whether they're for three months, or whether they're for a year or two years, they, they should all end up being treated the same.
Well, it's, it's certainly a possibility, because it was definitely a, a major point of the appellate court's decision, right, to kind of negate this idea of, of temporal limitations, you know?
Well, because it wasn't sp, it wasn't spelled out.
Right.
So it was silent with respect to that.
Right.
You know, they did change the law in, in Whibley, the town of Branford did. They changed the zoning, right?
Yes.
No one had a problem with that. This case is, Whibley's about the old law that was silent on the, on time.
Yes, yes.
Pine Orchard, it's a beach community with one of these special...
Exactly, so it would be very much like, like Giant's Neck, or, or Black Point, that have their own, or Pressing Beach, that have their own zoning. That's exactly what happened. And I went to look at the town of Branford and to see, they don't have anything in their own regulations. Zero, nothing. There's no short-term rental zoning regulation that I could find in the town of Branford. But you do find it in this Pine Orchard.
So to Gary's point, you know, being silent, you know, and your comment about waiting for the attorney to kind of bless our report, which I have some issues with, you know? But, you know, is there a challenge to whether a zoning set of regulations can decide an issue by being silent on it? And whether they're permissive or non-permissive regulations? Who, who addresses these regulations as permissive? Is that our zoning board? Is that our zoner? Is that our Board of Selectmen? Is that a nationwide phenomenon that occurs? Or, you know, I think if you could challenge the fact that the rentals are this, that, and they're silent, why couldn't we challenge the fact that zoning regulations are permissive by being silent or not permitted? And it doesn't, I still don't feel that makes any sense, but...
I guess...
That doesn't mean anything can happen by it, but, but I think that brings up an interesting question. And if they were tossed out, and we had to put something in, then you're addressing the situation, you know? And eliminating a lot of this back and forth.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, when I heard him say this whole discussion of permissive versus prohibitive, I'm not a zoning guy, so I'm like, I had as much difficulty as you did with it. But once I read it and ran a number of cases, it seems like there's a tradition.
Yes.
If it's silent on it, the courts are, even some of the courts were having some disagreement on how do we define it? And really, what it, it's not an easy area. But I think East Line is, not only is it, it's permissive and it's silent, but it's also expressly indicated, I use a different term, where it says the tourist home...
Yes.
Is not allowed. And the tourist home is probably the closest definition of an Airbnb short-term rental that, that exists. That's how I read it, historically.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, that could be expressly not prohibited. And I think the question is, are we, the first question is, are we gonna make? And you started this whole committee with this question. What are we gonna do? Are we gonna permit these things or not? And that's the first question that we need to tell the Board of Selectmen, you know, this is our recommendation. Either we permit them, or we don't. Then we can answer, you know, get into the other details if we want. But again, like Greg, I don't think we're qualified, I don't, to write a statute about this. Now, that just sounds beyond our abilities.
And that would be within the purview of the zoning commission.
Right, true.
That's definitely within their, their purview to, to come up with amendments to zoning, to reflect now the recognition and approval of, you know, of short-term rentals. But the, just as the Board of Selectmen, it's within their jurisdiction to come up with an ordinance and go through that whole process. So we wouldn't be expected to be the engineers, if you will, and the scribes and doing the detail. You could just, in a very, you know, high level, just say, you know, here are the elements, here are the elements that you want to, want to contain and have expressed within an ordinance. And here are the elements that you want to make sure are regulated, if possible. But, yeah, we're not, we're not the architects of that.
Right.
I, I agree, there needs to be more clarification in the zoning regs. But I think the feeling is, wait to see what happens to the Supreme Court decision, then go back and look. And I know the long-term rental has never come up before, because it's never been an issue. These issues have just come up since Airbnb, basically. So everyone's always rented their house for a year, two years, and there's never been an issue. It's just the Airbnb that kind of brought all this to the surface. But I agree, there needs to be more clarification. But I think until the, they make a judgment in that case, it might be a little premature.
So we're, I mean, wherever I think we, we can within the report, you know, that's, that brings me to, I think it was, well, we'll talk about that when we get to that, to the next, the next item on the agenda. But there is a, a section I've added, without writing it yet, called Thoughts and Conclusions. And I thought, okay, we're, we're at this precipice, we're literally at a precipice, where we have all this information, we have a good handle now, much better handle, all of us, on the uniqueness of East Lime's short-term rental situation. And so, you know, here's a direction we're headed. Given that, what can we conclude at this point, without coming up with a final, final, based upon that, that the case that's coming down? So that section, let's, I'll just jump over there now and, you know, might as well just talk about it. But that section would be towards, is at the end of the report. It's on page 14. So after the section, after section 10, that goes through the examples of other municipalities. And then on page 14, Thoughts and Conclusions, would be section 11 of the paper. So we can come to that more when we, we discuss section six, as I said. But I, I thought that would be the place to, because I, what I was trying to do in each of these sections was not make too many conclusions, but just give the information. was not make too many conclusions, but just give the information. But I think at some point, you know, that, it would be helpful, excuse me, for a wrap-up, if you will, and to get those thoughts. So what I was thinking of doing, we can talk about it more later, was asking everyone to sort of pile on on that one. And then, and it didn't matter, I was thinking, it doesn't matter if we're not all in agreement either, in that section. It could be three people think this, and two people think that. That's perfectly fine.
Yeah, it's an interim.
Right, it's an interim report. Our thoughts are interim, because we don't have a final decision from the Connecticut Supreme Court. And that would just, at least, even if it, it's all irrelevant, and it becomes irrelevant, then at least we can move forward. But at this point, we're still sort of stuck with it.
But given the, the new Supreme Court date, would it be prudent for us to come up with a final report? Because it's going to be a few months down the road, we should hear, if they're hearing it that quickly, imagine they're going to act a little quicker on it. So we should know their result by May or June, right? You think, Gary?
Why, yeah, maybe sometime
Probably in the summer. That's what I'm thinking, too, sometime by the summer.
That's not too long.
That's not bad.
That's, I mean, why bother with an interim report if we just wait and then have everything in, you know, ready, one way or the other?
Is the interim, is the interim report a way to get some feedback? Like, we put our thoughts, that section?
Yes.
If we present that to the board, is that a mechanism to get feedback, at least to the committee?
Yeah, and also to, I think it, it sort of compiles information ahead of any, of the Whibley decision. It's also for our benefit, as we, as we pick up our work, once Whibley is decided, then we don't have to go back and reinvent the wheel and look at every, you know, of the other towns, all the other information, our assessment, everything else. So it's, it's just the compilation of information to date, you know? And it's allowing us to at least find a path. The path may have to change, or change slightly, but I think the interim report allows a path to be, you know, set, in a way. Does that make sense?
I
Yes, John?
I, um, I think if I was, if I was sitting on a, you know, board, and there's a major case that could affect what our opinions are here, you know, I don't, you know, with everything else in this case, you know, you know, the counsel's doing, and has to deal with other subjects, I don't, I think I would, even if we had it, if we came forward with it, or a report, if I was sitting on a board that was receiving our report, with such a key item that's in play, that hasn't been decided yet, I think I would, you know, with everything else I had to focus on, I think I would push this to the side and not even focus on it until, you know, a decision was made. Then I would pick it up, because, you know, burning a lot of brain cells, you know, going through it with something that is totally, you know, on the
Are you fine that I don't have any brain cells?
No, me, me. So the, the, so, you know, that, that's the, I think, from our point of view, you know, having all the pieces ready to go, and when that report comes in, we reconvene, and then we analyze what we have with that, and then we give our report. Then I think you've got the people who are going to be receiving our report, looking at, you know, a full loaf of bread versus three-quarters. That's, that's my only comment on that. Thank you.
I completely agree with that from the ex officio.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure. He knew all the information. We're still, we're still waiting.
Okay.
I, I think the purpose of, from what I'm hearing is, the interim report, you're not quite sure if we should even submit. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, not at all.
Oh.
The interim report doesn't ask them to make any decisions or any, any commitments.
Okay.
It's just, it's, it's a follow-up to what you did when you went to the meeting and spoke in the public delegation.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem submitting the interim report.
No, nor do I.
Yeah. Nor do I.
The gentleman just spoke.
You had a problem.
Yeah, I just don't think it's going to be paid attention to, literally, I mean what
Okay, I heard you correctly, right, right, right. If I may respond to that?
Yes.
I, I think what this, and Anne wrote the whole thing, I'm completely delinquent in my duties, but it's really a statement of facts as to what's going on in East Line at this point. And in all kind of briefs, legal briefs, we have the statement of facts, and then we have a law. We have our statement of facts, we're waiting, kind of, what's the law in Whibley, and then we apply the fa- the law to the facts. So, so this, what it kind of does is, it sets forth, this is what's happening in East Line, factual, factual. And, and the application of a law will be done after the Supreme Court renders its decision. So it's good for us, as a working document, to
Yes.
put our thoughts together, and
Yes, and then when the decision comes down, we can modify it.
Yes, correct.
But I think the issue is
We can do a final report at that point.
The issue is, leaves the reader who was coming on getting, not just the facts, giving some recommendation, they're going to get to the end and say, well, where's the end of my story here? That's one of the points that's
What's your opinion?
Um, yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem giving them an interim report that doesn't have the end of the story. I think we can give some paths, maybe. I think of it like, when you ask ways, I want to go from here to Virginia. This is where you want to go this way, six hours, you want to go this way with some tolls, do you want to go this way? So, you know, we could have a whole bunch of different things in there.
Yeah.
And I think it's, even if we don't get feedback from them, it would be an opportunity for them to provide feedback if
Yes. And the thing is, you know, it may be premature to say, but Whibley will have some effect, but I think its effect will be limited.
I agree.
So, um, some of the things we talk about, you know, other than our noise ordinance and parking ordinance, we have the things that we talk about with our STR regulation, I think are going to hold up. I think they're going to hold up. So just a little prediction, crystal ball, I don't know. But, so, and we might as well get our thoughts together and, and our information together, because we had so much of it. If, if we didn't go through this exercise of corralling it, I don't know about you, but I think it's, it's hard, you'd be lost, it'd be hard to make policy, you know? We did some goal-setting, but it's really hard to make policy unless you corral the information, so.
And I, I think that's what this report did in spades, that it really, it's distilled the last six months
Okay.
of research. So I think it's got some real value, if not for the Board of Selectmen, certainly for our
That's right, that's
Yeah, I would disagree for us. That's probably, I agree with that.
I mean, that's, but we're
For us, I only have to carry this to the meeting now, instead of what I have before.
That's right. Think about, think about Gary's initial five-pound package that we all got. Okay, so
And just, I'd just like to say, I appreciate you doing this. It's so thorough and well-written. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks.
Do we want, do we have a date when we want to wrap it up?
Yes, I mean, I mean
Just the next thing?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll come to that when we do the scheduling of meetings, I think.
I'm sorry, wrap up, when you want to finish this?
Oh, when I'd like to finish it? I mean, now I have Paul's information, and you have
I have to do
You have, you have your information. Gary was king of public opinion summary there, right? And so, you're going to do a shorter version
Yes, yes, yes.
of your, of your public opinion summary. And then, there's really not many other sections. Greg had given me the, the section on key materials to read, so that's the last section. And then just the Thoughts and Conclusions section was the thing that, and you know, because it's a draft, you all can email me, that's fine. We're not having an illegal meeting by you emailing me about the draft. But if you want us to take a little time, and in the next couple of days, to say, you know, if I could make a thought or conclusion based upon this paper and based upon my experience on this committee, that I'd like to have expressed in that section eleven, it would be X. So just share it, you know, that's fine. And then I'm just going to take whatever you tell me, and I'm going to put it in there. And it doesn't matter, as I said, if you agree or disagree with each other. I'm sure there's going to be about three or four different versions of things. So, and that, that's helpful. That's, you know, conclusory, it pulls the paper together.
When do we want to do that?
And when do we are done? I mean, you know, I'd say the next week or so. I mean, I'm, what I'm hoping for is, by the beginning of the month of April, to give this report to the Board of Selectmen. And then they, at their leisure, can read it. If we want to do a presentation to them as a group, we could do that maybe at their May first meeting. They have a meeting in April, first Wednesday in April, and then I think that, I think their next meeting isn't until May first. Something like
Okay, so when is your budget final?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
When, when does the Board of Finance, Finance have to finalize the meeting?
Yeah, I believe, yeah, I believe it's early April. I don't have a exact date, but I know there's only I believe it's early April. I'm going to stay there.
Because things have moved on to the Board of Finance at this point?
They have.
Correct.
They just haven't actually started the deliberations, but I believe that that's going to be happening.
Okay.
It's completely, eight to, next week, they're going to start.
Okay.
Tomorrow, I believe, yeah, tomorrow, I think. The following
Okay.
So they're starting with one meeting tomorrow, and then it goes to next week, and I think it's pretty much every other time.
Right, right. But you, but the Board of Selectmen has given its recommendations to Board of Finance at this point?
Yes.
Because you, it has to go through you before it gets to them. Okay.
Twenty-seven, if we get all sections and edits done.
Yeah.
Is that good? That's next Wednesday.
Um, yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think that works for me, because I
Yeah, I agree.
You know?
Try to add it and get things back to hand by the twenty-seventh, which would be next Wednesday.
That's fine, yeah.
It still gives me time to do my taxes before.
Okay, that's good. Yeah, I don't want to interfere with that.
Exactly.
Right, right. And then the other thing is, the attachments and exhibits, well, it comes out later, but yeah, those will be, I'll send them separately. And I'm not doing too many links, I'm just, you know, I did, I did one link today, I set that up. But I'm just trying to have the hard copy of some of those things. I mean, the decision of how many exhibits you do at this point, there's, there could be a lot more, I just tried to just do the essentials. Any final report could always have more. But anyway, okay, so the, so, yeah, I look forward to those, those opinions. That sounds like a, a good thing to do. Since we're kind of on number seven, which is Agenda Item Seven, we've kind of
What, what are we doing on March twenty-seventh?
So we are, so the members
We're meeting?
Read this and edit it and send your remarks back to hand by the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, so by the twenty-seventh, just email your, your thoughts about that section eleven, which is Thoughts and Conclusions, based upon the paper, and your experiences so far. And it doesn't have to be terribly lengthy, a few sentences, a short paragraph, but I'm just going to take them all and blend them all into that section, whatever you tell me, so.
Excuse me, I think it'd be, since twenty-seventh is the same day as that Whibley public comments, it would, it would be nice, you know, some of our thoughts may change after, if we have the benefit of, you know
No, that's fine, the
The oral arguments.
Yeah, well, that decision will not
No, 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 the decision won't come down, but the oral arguments
Oh, the oral arguments.
If we, if we, we ultimately, I think, again, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know the whole, this whole timeframe, but I think that these, these cases, they don't, they don't go on for hours, oral arguments. I think it's a reasonably short amount of time.
Right, hour.
Right, it's a short time.
And I don't know if that's going to be, you know, live on, you know, Public TV or anything, I have no idea.
It might, yeah, it's possible.
It might, but I would, I mean, I clearly think, if it is, I, I've already put it down here, I'm clearly intend to listen to that, because I think we could get a lot of information. You know, it doesn't matter typically what, you get a lot from the oral arguments, is what I, you know, I understand, so, you know, at least
Are you asking the person, like, the twenty-ninth, or the twenty-eighth, or something? Is that what you're saying?
That's fine. We're going to do that Friday?
When are we meeting after that?
I think we'll be meet
Yeah.
Much later, no?
Um, yeah.
Just to get this, this document done
And then
finalized, so we can get it to the
And then send it in that first, hopefully, that first week of April or so, to Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
And then we, and then we have our next meeting not until after you've done that.
Yeah.
The FOI situation about us going back and forth with all of our conclusions on email makes me a tad nervous.
Yeah, we can still, it's still a draft document, so you can still give me what you think should be in section eleven.
It's not going to be a debate, it's just going to be a
Right, you're just, you're just, it's a one-way set of information, and it is a draft. So we're able, we're able to do that.
Okay.
Yeah. Otherwise, we'd have to be meeting continuously, almost, you know? Unless you, the other thing is, think about it this week, we could meet next Monday, briefly, and you could give me your thoughts then, but it doesn't incorporate
Whibley.
Whibley, if, 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 the other thing about Whibley is there are briefs, if you, if you feel like reading the briefs.
They don't bring up any really new issues. They actually insult, one party insults the other party, saying, you didn't bring up any new issues. You just rehash what the appellate court said.
Okay.
So, I don't think we're going to
Do we need to add that to our report, so it's all
Oh, I have a whole list of
You got that.
I, I realize that the, you know, the, you know, the goal, try to get this to the board as quickly as possible, but I think without a, a more solid conclusion, I, I think as long as the ex officio is here, she's going to indicate, you know, to the board, this group is moving forward, you know, you know, I really, again, my personal feeling on that is that they're not going to pay a lot of, thank you very much for, you know, your interim report, but, you know, not really going to really do anything with it until we get some conclusions, so Whibley's settled, and we get, you know, and, and your committee comes up with a synopsis of this. It's nice to have all the background, and we appreciate all you've done, which I think she can, you know, this fine lady can communicate, you know, that's just, you know, so I, I think that the, the urgency of getting that to them by this April meeting may not, I'm not sure I see the value, total value, in doing that, because I think it's obvious, the tremendous work that, you know, you know, you two have primarily done, and we've all helped out a little, but I mean, it's a tremendous amount of work.
It's Easter week.
That's just, you know, it shows them that something's occurring, so.
So you're going to do it April first? To get edits and sections to
Yeah, so that's, that would be
Wait for second?
Second, what is it?
Okay, so it'd be after Easter, and it would be
So it's Easter, Monday, and
Right, right.
That's April Fools, anyway, that's a good time.
So, by the, by the second of April?
All right, second, April second. That's
That's when you want
Just your, just your thought, you know, and it doesn't even have to be in sentences, if you think, that, you know, just phrases, that these are the, these are the key points. These are, you know, my top five key points, I would, I want incorporated into section eleven. Then that's all you have to do. And there's no debate, there's no discussion, it's just, you're, you're submitting it almost like you're, like an outline for your writing of section eleven. And I'll do the writing, but you'll do the outlining, in phrases or sentences, whatever works for you. You know, if you had to write section eleven, what would you do? In summary.
I mentioned the last time, were we going to go through this and discuss paragraphs that we may or may not agree with, your interpretation of
Yeah, I mean, we can do that as we
You know, before, not now, or
For the second
Yes, yes.
Even not, even after the second.
Anytime, anytime, that's right. And I started to correct one, one section that you had mentioned, Paul, but I still have to do more about, I, I am going to incorporate the idea of, of, um, family rentals or, um, what are they, they're legacy rentals, let me get the word correct. Um, it'll come to me, I just can't remember the, the phrasing of it. The family rental, you know, where families will return to a community which they are-
Like Paul talked about last time.
Right, so that's going to, I'm going to put that in a positive section, you know, with just bringing it a little bit in the negative and then a little bit in the positive, so, so it, it's going to be in there. I didn't forget, it's on my list. Okay, so, let's just wrap up, wrap up Section six, Agenda Item six, rather, not Section six, I'm still writing the paper. It's, it's Agenda Item six, which is, um, or five, rather.
I'm on seven B.
I'm just, I'm going back to five to make sure, so we're, so Greg and Gary, you're okay with this idea that we may not do final, final, but we're, we come to the precipice as much as we can, okay? And then, um, we pretty much have gone through, uh, there is a, uh, we upped the, uh, updated version. I, I'll just really quickly, if I could, take just a minute or two to, um, highlight. First of all, there is a, this is the, um, list of exhibits, so this is just to keep track of them. A bunch of them you probably have already read, um, in, in the last several months, um, so-
This one here is that?
Yes, correct, that's your, um, yeah, and let me just find, bear with me, I'm finding my, my copy of, here. Okay, um-
Now, if we had a question about one of these, would we find it in our, in our emails, which these would have been in one of our emails that we got? Have you been part of this or no?
Um, so, oh, not, not every single thing, but for example, um, the noise control ordinance, um, you're so familiar, you've got to be familiar with it now, and the parking ordinance, because, um, even though, um, I think actually you did, we did get copies of those plus the writing that we did about those.
Start there first, if I-
Yeah, um, the, the staff summary, um, there's some newspaper articles that were in Gary's information, and then the zoning regulations, like, we have some, some of those were in our packets. So, there's a lot of things that, that are in there. I'm going to try to work with, um, Brooke on getting this set of documents together, so that you have those for your own reference, right? So just quickly, um, I did today, I just did do a link for our webpage, I, it's not in your copy, but it's in my copy, there's a link. I put that in Section one right up front, so that I think ninety percent of the information about us is in that, you know, is right there. The section that, um, I added on section, in Section three, there's a part called, um, Section three, three C, private deed restrictions and bylaws, and it's found on page seven and the beginning of page eight. So, as you recall, we asked, um, we did ask Attorney Zamarka about, what about deed restrictions? What about homeowners association bylaws? So this gives you the little, his answer, and then, you know, just some other examples. So this was pretty much drawn from, um, and you, you did get a copy of that. Uh, I think the whole town of East Line got a copy of that, because that happened right at the time of our public hearing, and that information was made available to everyone. The que- the, in the second paragraph of that little section, small section, I talk a little bit about bylaws, and that, that is based on a more recent exchange I had with, um, Attorney Zamarka, because I was, just had some concerns in the back of my head about the authority of bylaws, like, the authority of bylaws that, um, for a community, a beach community, that doesn't have its own zoning. So for example, um, Greg, your community, um, your beach community, um, in Oak Grove, that you don't have your own zoning, you do do your bylaws, and as, as an incorporated, um, association under the state of Connecticut laws, do these bylaws have any special magical effect? So I did have a brief exchange with, um, Attorney Zamarka, and the, the answer for that is no-go, as one would expect.
Does no-go mean, I'm sure?
Uh, no, it just means, um, that in other words, by your own bylaws, you can't start to regulate, um, short-term rentals. So you, it's just a, it's a land use issue that could either going to be by your own zoning, if you've got it, or town zoning, our zoning generally. So, because I was thinking about, like, homeowners associations, which by state law have all these powers, you know? They're really empowered to do so much, and if a homeowners association says, "Oh, no short-term rentals in this, this community," that stands, that actually, and Attorney Zamarka addressed that issue. But then my mind went to, well, what about the bylaws of these associations, which are also enacted and informed by state law, just in case? And the answer was, no. So if there's an ordinance that the town enacts, or the zoning that we say we want to go this way with zoning, that's what happens. Yeah, so, you know-
Yeah, no, I, I get it, I mean, I understand.
Yes, I mean, that's, there's vast, vast amounts of, a vast number of statutes in the state, authorizing homeowners associations with all kinds of, of powers and authority, but that's a whole separate kettle of fish.
What about deeds, something in a deed?
Yes, the deed, and so that's addressed here in that section, so that, um, deed restrictions, you know, stand up, they will stand up. So, for example, I could ask, uh, Debbie Jett Harris about, more about what's happening in Pine Point, and she had a sample of that language that she was referring to about deeds there, because that is something that could be relied on compared to a bylaw.
That's the Spiritual Aid Society, has those deeds, right? And is that a religious organization that owns the westerly half of Pine Grove?
Okay.
And that's, they have their own specific deed restrictions there versus, you know, the center or easterly half of Pine Grove. Sounds like a lot, but it's not much bigger than this building, you know?
So that's, yeah, that's a, that's going to be a whole part, when Attorney Zamarka does his final opinions on things, that's going to be, I'm throwing that in there, that's got to be researched. What, what is the story with those deeds, what do they cover? And there'll be more information about bylaws and the authority of bylaws, and generally about homeowners, homeowners associations. But that was this section, so that did get straightened out for this, for this edition of the, of the paper. And then moving on to, um, Paul, you had, had gotten information about, um, you know, property assessments, you had different forms and all of these various, you know, issues. So basically, the property assessment issues come down to two things. So I'm on page eleven, Section nine of the paper. So I, at our last meeting, uh, after Paul had given information about, on the forms he had found and so forth, and that he's used himself, I mentioned that I would try to, I had a couple of questions in my head, so I did speak with, um, Diane, our, 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 the town's assessor, and it was, ended up being a long conversation, but the guts of it are all here on page eleven, bottom of page eleven, and the top half of page twelve. So, and John Salino, you had mentioned this whole issue also of, okay, what about the valuation of short-term rentals from an assessment standpoint, what do we do with that? What about the personal property within? The personal property one's an easy situation, it, it's, it's, it's covered, there are two, currently two short-term rentals in town that actually pay. I couldn't believe it. Diane thinks that based upon the numbers in our Granicus assessment, we're never going to be talking about a lot of money there. She ballparked it at about maybe forty thousand dollars a year, or, but it's something. The bigger issue, because I was thinking in my mind, okay, how can we crack that nut of assessing the value? Well, you can't really crack it, because, um, the way the real estate valuation is done is, um, done, not using that capitalization of net income method, but it's, um, she uses, um, sort of a mass assessment approach, which is basically, and Anne, I'm sure you're familiar with some of this, um, which really is based on sales and market trends.
Yes.
And this is also the approach taken, I asked her, "What about every other community in Connecticut, are we unique in this?" But we are not unique in this, so if you, if you go down to the third paragraph in Section nine, where it says, "According to our assessor, um, single-family residences, including those that may be used for short-term rentals, are valued using a mass appraisal method that relies on market information rather than an income method applied to commercial properties." So, for example, you see that we have over eight thousand residential properties for the twenty-three grand list versus two hundred and seventy-nine for commercial properties. So, no town in Connecticut that she is aware of is doing this differently, short-term rentals are not. Everyone's using that method of assessment, so-
We're short-shooting ourselves, then.
Uh, yes, so, but it led me to the conclusion that, um, and you'll see that in the last sentences of that section, that, you know, one of the ways municipalities can deal with this is, you know, trying to impose an occupancy tax on these operations, which we couldn't do that unless the state legislature were to allow us to do that. And that's currently been raised by a local legislator, actually, yes. So, um, so on the, the real estate part of this, we're stuck, unless the state acts, or unless, yeah, and unless Section twelve sixty-three B is amended in some way.
If, if I may just address the mass issue there, you know, Vision appraisal does, has done our reappraisals for the last few times, every five years, ten, specifically. And if you note, the phenomenon of those reports over time, there's an ebb and flow of the different sections. One year, the, the whole shoreline increased in value exponentially by forty percent, while the commercial district kind of simmered out a little bit as a result of economic conditions outside of East Line.
Okay.
And then the next assessment, it almost was a reverse. So, so to say that the short-term rentals aren't being addressed is almost not correct, because they are addressed as part of this whole mess. So if the, the tide rises for all shoreline communities, any bed and breakfast or short-term rental will rise as well. And if the commercial districts and interior and other residential areas rise, then they will rise as, or fall as well, so.
Sure.
I think it's a generality we got to be careful of when we're talking about that.
Yeah, um, okay, I mean, it's one way to look at it, it's one way to, to do that. But the issue has come up, you know, on an individual basis, so, um, at least with respect to a personal property, it's a cleaner situation. The question would be, well, we don't have a registry of the short-term rentals to then, you know, and Diane has become aware of the two in question, like, through the back door, you know, that is, it wasn't something particularly apparent, because we don't have a list of them with respect to the personal property taxation. So that's where we are at that, so that, that, that was, that took some figuring out.
If you had a registry, if you went down that route-
Yes.
Then they would, you know, then, you know, then the assessor would know, you know, who they are, and, uh-
Yes.
And then at that point, I see no reason why they couldn't send them out in the annual income and expense sheet like they do in commercial. Just because they, you know, haven't done it in the past doesn't mean it's not proper, because the whole idea of this whole committee meeting is we're dealing with something that's new. And, um, and to think that if somebody is generating, you know, a, you know, whatever, a hundred thousand dollar NOI out of a beachfront property that's assessed for three hundred or four hundred, and they've got an NOI and, you know, on a commercial basis, you know, I, I'm not so sure, I, you know, I mean, we're in uncharted waters, just, we, what we're doing right now, but-
Right.
But if you go that next step and you have it registered, you know, then, you know, then, then you do know who's, you know, who is operating, and, uh, you know, so I, you know, yes, it's a little more, you know, a little more work, but I'm not so sure I totally agree with, you know, that, you know, her, or, that particular, you know, particular theory. You know, the, and it would, you know, uh, you know, like for, again, I don't know how they do it on a, you know, a bed and breakfast. Is she doing it on a bed and breakfast on, on the group, is that considered a commercial property, or is that considered a, you know, residential property? I, I don't know.
Yeah.
Just asking those questions, right? I think that there's a little more involved with that, and, um, you know.
It doesn't, I agree with you that there are still questions, and I don't know, um, about the, the technical process of assessing in this way, except for the general points here and what's in our state statutes. But, uh, that being said, um, it doesn't look like, um, there's going to be a different approach taken because of the, the way every single town, it's not just East Line doing this, it's every town doing this. This is accepted assessment practice, if you will, so I think that's the way, and I don't say, I'm not-
I don't accept that, but-
I, I know, I'm not saying that that, that it is not an open door, but-
To me, I think that's a recommendation that we could give, you know, and the, and, uh, you know, and, and that exactly would be a Board of Selectmen issue, if they want to instruct the, you know, the town, you know, to look at, you know, to, you know, to look at that. So it, I, I don't, I don't think ignoring that.
Yeah.
But I, I mean, I think that would be something that's a logical, you know, recommendation from this board. And by the way, it doesn't mean that somebody who's not renting on a consistent basis, their NOI exactly even, may, may have come in, you know, less than their, you know, value as a home, you know, so, you know, and, and, and the people can always appeal, there's an appeal, uh, you know-
Of course, right, right.
So, I think, but if somebody's doing it on a full-time basis, you know, three sixty days a year, it's, it's, you know, it's different than if, like, at the town you mentioned, I believe, whether you have to be, you know, you have to be on premises, so then, you know, there, there is some differences, so I, and like, it's just-
So that's, that's where that stood in that, in that, in the, what, from what you had told me, and then the so, the follow-up conversation I did have with, with Diane. So that's where we're at there, um, yeah, the door's perhaps still open, I'm not sure. And then the last section was Section ten, which just, you know, covers all, you know, the various examples that we've, we have some detailed information about, um, again, some of these towns you'd either read about in media accounts, or, um, Gary and Greg have discussed in their, you know, their comparison chart. I incorporated, um, the line, the information about line here, um, and there's the Simsbury example. I kind of had one example of ordinance, one example of, you know, pure ordinance, pure zoning, and then a combo, just to tick off the tracks. And as I said, I would put Simsbury, I mean, um, Stonington in here, just to revisit that topic of a, you know, of, of, um, of what went on there. So those were the, those were the, um, you know, those, that was basically the updates, plus the, the exhibits. So, I guess that brings us, yeah, and we can still do, you know, individual, um, you know, comments, we can do next meeting, so that we can just do a final cleanup. And then, so that brings us to scheduling, uh, meetings, so, um, thoughts about next meeting? So we know where we're at for, uh, for our thoughts and conclusions. And then, um, so when, when do you think a, a meeting thereafter would be appropriate? Thoughts on that?
So if we get all of our inputs to you by April second, is your plan to present that interim report to the Board at their next meeting? Would that be April, or would that be too late to get on the agenda?
Yeah, it's too late, because the next day is their meeting.
Okay, so you'd be getting it to then, May?
Yes, I'd say, you'd be, we can get it to them anytime after that, but in, ahead of, I think the next meeting for them is May first, you know? So, for-
We want to go through this before we-
Yes, absolutely.
We don't want to just give our opinions and then that goes in the record, and that goes, right?
Trying to figure out when would be the best time for a meeting.
At least debate some point.
Right, so, assuming we're, yeah, we, you know, we could definitely, how about, how about, um, Monday, April eighth? If, if you're giving me information, then, the other sections can be written that are remaining, right? We can still do public opinion, we don't need the, we don't need, the only thing we need the, is that Section eleven is what was the hold, is the holdup, but we can finish as much as we can, otherwise, ahead of that too. And we can circulate that to you, no problem.
These books for me, it's just a solar eclipse that day, but outside of-
On Monday, the eighth?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
You want to watch the whole day?
It'll only last in thirty minutes.
Okay, I'll make a note of that, and, so Monday, the eighth, how does that look, um, does that look okay for using this room? Or using the conference room?
Yeah, there's nothing, uh, not another right now.
Okay, so we'll do, um, okay. Okay, so we'll do, um, okay.
And that's to finalize this thing.
Yes.
And then, I would think we could have a time off until WIBI's done, right?
Yes, yes.
After that, huh?
Yes, I agree, I agree. So we'll try, so that's why, ahead of, ahead of that meeting on the 8th, you'll, you'll get that last section, but even before that, we'll make sure that we get the last couple of sections.
Oh, it sounds good.
That should be the only thing on the agenda for the.
Yes, I don't see anything else, yeah.
All right, so that sounds good.
So, so April 8th is the Monday of our next meeting. Perfect, okay, and we, we know what our timetable for the status report is. We'll try to get it to them pronto after the 8th, and then they have time to read it ahead of a May 1st meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay. I don't see our ex officio there at the moment. Okay, so, any member wanna make a final comment for tonight? Any last thoughts?
I'd like my own final comment on the.
Yes, please do.
Just recognizing that, if this, what ultimately happens at some point where the committee is zoning or whatever, and they make a decision on the, on the, you know, it goes from a zoning issue. As I understand what Mrs. Mark is saying, is that anybody who's pre-existing would be, you know, pre, an ordinance would override that, but I, but zoning would be anything going forward.
Say that again?
Zoning, any change we make in zoning would affect properties going forward, not pre-existing properties that are doing this, is that correct?
No.
An ordinance would.
No, because they cannot be pre-existing if it's illegal use of the property.
Yeah, they're not permitted now at all.
Not, not reforming pre-existing.
So that, so that.
But you have your own zoning.
Unless you, yeah.
No, I know, we have our own. But the, but if, if the, if, 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 if we were to, if, if somebody, if the Board of Selectmen ultimately, you know, put something in in zoning, and if we have nothing, and then to put it in, that doesn't seem like it would be totally fair to the people who were doing this, because, you know, how would you stop them from doing it, and how are you gonna enforce that? So that's one of the considerations. On the other side of the coin, if they were considered to be pre-existing, would be, and, and we restrict it going forward somehow, then what you'd be doing is anybody who has it, you'd be making their properties far more valuable, which we're saying we're not gonna, or we're indicating that we may not be able to evaluate, so you're gonna, you know, so, you know, there are definitely considerations here, you know, to affecting people who are currently doing it, and, and then also, you know, both ways, either making their properties even more exclusive, more valuable, or vice versa. If you try to stop it, then I'd be devaluing it, and I'm not sure any of those, you know, is, you know, I'm not taking a side on either side, I'm just pointing that out, that's, could not, you know, that could be something to think about, that's not, may not be entirely fair either way. It's just something to think about.
Right, yeah, 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 right, right.
'Cause that's, you know, you know, you make something, you're exclusive.
I mean, I think, I think the general takeaway is there's no approach that you can take here that is going to cover everything that you want it to do. I mean, it, it clearly, you know, there's, there are pluses and minuses of, of any approach, you know, from doing nothing to doing something, to banning, to, you know, any of these things. So, it's definitely a kind of, I'll say, Rubik's Cube of, you know, that's kinda what it is.
And, and we have to be fair. Fairness comes in.
Yes, that's, that's in our goals, so, and go back and look at those goals if you have a chance, if I, if my last comment would be, take a look at those goals, if there's something that we've, you know, we were so gung-ho about, and all of a sudden we've abandoned a certain thought, you know, let's go back and make sure we either change our goals or make sure we adhere to them, so, 'cause that was very helpful in getting us going. All right, so with that said, I think we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? Thanks so much.
Thank you, Anne.